Probably from all the problems that they had.
So quiet. Okay, here we go. Welcome, everybody, to Beaver Creek Board of Education meeting for February 15, 2024. Please call and roll.
Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Hunt.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mrs. Regano.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to need a motion in a second to approve the agendas presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
And Mrs. Regano.
Yes. And we're into presentations.
We have two presentations this evening, and the first one is our school spotlight, and we're going to look at Ankeny Middle School tonight. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Shimko, our principal at Ankeny, to come on up, and he can introduce his group.
Good evening, everyone. I have a group of students, three students, that I will invite up here in a few minutes after I give you a little bit of background about what they're going to talk to you about tonight. So to give you a little background and purpose on two classes that we piloted this year during our school day. Part of our Ankeny team, our counselors, and at the time, our principal, Mr. Baker, and I visited Mason Schools last school year. They have been doing an empowerment and impact classes for the last several years, and we went to go see what this class was all about. This year, we were able to pilot the empowerment class, which is for girls in any grade level at Ankeny. And the following things are some of the things that it focuses on. We wanted to help build life skills for positive mental health and physical health. We also, it is gender specific, the empowerment classes for girls and the impact classes for boys. The goal is to help students build confidence and resilience when faced with a challenge, and this also ties in nicely with our social emotional learning component in the district. So to give you a little bit of background, as I said, we did pilot it this year, and we had six students that were in the first semester of our empowerment class. And up here, we have some of the topics that our teacher focused on, and they focused on stereotypes and labels, confidence and self-esteem, body image, the scary power of negative words, combating relational aggression, AKA drama, healthy communication, social media safety, human trafficking and self-defense, career exploration, women of history, influential females, benefits of exercise, and they were able to exercise a couple, one to two days a week. That was part of the component. Our impact class focuses on the following topics, some are similar: grit, growth mindset, leadership, problem-solving skills, goal-setting, healthy communication and behaviors, social media safety, self-advocacy, benefits of exercise, weekly physical activities, self-improvement, building meaningful relationships, and values and beliefs. So down at the bottom, it says there, "Students will have an opportunity to focus on self-improvement in the midst of a busy academic school day." So one of the things that we have done this year, as we're going through the scheduling process, is that we have conveyed all of this information to our students as they're considering what they want to register for next year. And we're hoping to next year build the number of students that we have in these two individual classes. So here's just a few pictures of what the students did. They did spend some time learning self-defense from Officer Majorsack, and I will introduce him here in a little bit. And they also had the opportunity to go to a game at Nutter Center to see the Wright State Women's Basketball play. So I'm going to invite three of our students from the class, and they're going to come up and share with you a couple of things. Either what was their favorite part of the class and then what they learned about themselves throughout the semester. So first off, I'm going to have Olivia Massey, who is an eighth grader here at Ankeny.
Hi, my name is Olivia. So my favorite part of empowerment was, I believe, being able to talk with my teachers and my friends every day. We had about like seven girls in there, one of which, she did move, which made me very sad. But we did talk a lot, we had a lot of exercise, we did a lot of fun things. My favorite part, though, was, I believe, the Women Through History presentation project, because I got to learn about a lot of people that I didn't know, actually. It went all the way back to the 1800s, I believe, right? Yeah. We did quite a lot of decades. Some of mine I did for the 80s, and I do a lot of famous people like Madonna, which is, she's a really fun person. But I learned about myself, that I actually am a very social person and that I really like to talk with my friends. I learned a whole bunch about like self-defense from Officer Majorsack. I learned a whole time about different women and how to deal with different types of drama, which I have dealt with a lot of drama. Being an eighth grader, you know, you have a lot of friends who like to be very dramatic about situations, so.
And next, we have seventh grader Bella France.
Hi. One of my favorite parts of the class was the UD basketball game, because I feel like we just like got to bond more throughout like the game and stuff. And I learned about myself that like, like I'm a very socialized person, and like I like to talk a lot with like my peers and with my friends and stuff like that.
Dylan Burnett, seventh grader.
Hello, I'm Dylan, and one of my favorite parts of the class was hanging out with a lot of kids that wouldn't judge you immediately on how you like, on your name, on what you do, like drawing or anything. And also, I learned a lot about self-defense and how most people judge how people look on themselves and stuff.
I want to thank the three students for taking the time out to come to share with you tonight. I would last but not least like to have Officer Dave Majorsack, who was our school resource officer between Coy and Ankeny. It's also National School Resource Officer Day, so he's going to tell you a little bit about what he talked about with the students.
Well, Mr. Morrison, they can't keep me away like they can't keep you away. I came back again, as another, standing at the school resource officer position, the middle schools now. So basically, what you just heard was what the empowerment's all about. It's the authority or the power given to someone to do something. So what my class and I try to empower into these young ladies is that they always have a fight in the game. Never give up. If you're attacked, if you're bullied, if you're messed with, always, always, always protect and defend yourself. So that's why the defensive tactics part was a great hit with these young ladies. They got to kick on me a little bit, they got to kick on the bags, and we'd like to go outside and actually do real-life scenarios. What's around you, the surroundings that you're in, how can you go into an area and say, "That doesn't look safe, I'm going to stay away from that, okay?" Or you got that spider sense is coming out in you, and you're like, "I just don't feel right, so what are we going to do to make it right, okay?" What's the safest plan? What's the safest exit? So I'm really excited for this class. Yes, there was only about seven young ladies in it, but I think if we, with my help in building it up, I think we're going to have a lot more kids interested, because some kids were like, "I want to do that class, I want to do that when we're talking about it." So hopefully, it gets built up higher than where it is now. But thanks for the opportunity to help teach these young ladies, and I'm right at home, so I appreciate everything. Good job, ladies.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate you coming out tonight. Our next presentation is our high school happenings, and we have three students with us tonight. We have Abby, Maren, and Katie, and so they're juniors, so I'd like to invite them up to the microphone. They're going to give the board an update on what's going on in our high school right now.
All right, good evening. My name is Maren Sandis, and this is Katie Anderson and Abby McCarty, and we're here to talk to you as a part of student council of Beaver Creek High School about some of the happenings at our school, like some of the sport events coming up and just other information about the sports, and then some information from the committees at student council, and then some other announcements and information from the high school. So as for student council, we currently have five committees working on individual projects. With our blood drive committee, we have a school-wide student blood drive on March 7th, currently getting signups with 120 out of 180 spots filled already. Student council is also hosting the high school annual dodgeball tournament on March 14th, and signups are currently happening now. We are running a school, we are running a district-wide food drive from the 20th of February to March 1st, and each homeroom from each school that donates the most food will be rewarded with a cookie party on behalf of student council. And our community service committee has organized us to volunteer at Evergreen Preschool again this semester, and that is on the 23rd of this month. And we are also currently planning community outreaches to begin with a volunteer organization to arrange for all student council members to participate in some volunteer hours this semester. And finally, student council has received over 80 new applications this semester for next year, and we are currently in the interviewing and conducting some planning processes right now. Thank you. As far as sports for student council, our sports programs are continuing to make our school proud. Both the boys' and girls' high school basketball teams are projected as number two seeds for the upcoming tournament. The boys' play at home this Friday, being the last game before the start of the tournament. The first tournament games are at Centerville High School. G-Walk statistics have both the boys' and girls' basketball teams currently in second place. The swim team is competing at Miami University this weekend for districts, which will provide each competitor an opportunity to qualify for state in Canton, Ohio. Recently, both the boys' and girls' swim got second at G-Walk. When it comes to wrestling, Jeremy Sabrell and Isaac Bolgaris from the high school are both ranked number one in their weight class by G-Walk. Nate Bono, Elijah Papalios, and Noah Wasgar are all ranked third. Oh, yeah. Our bowling team is going to districts and sectionals, both teams are hoping to qualify for states. And our girls' team is currently placed first in G-Walk, and our boys' team is second. The academic team is tied for first place with Northmont being undefeated eight to zero. Speech and Debate is going to state in a couple weeks, hopefully to qualify for nationals. Almost all of their team has qualified for state, thus continuing their amazing season. Lastly, tryouts for spring sports like track and field, lacrosse, and men's tennis are beginning now.
So I'm Abby. Kind of just to wrap up this presentation with some overarching information from the school, the 27th of February, so in two weeks, is our ACT day, which is where the freshmen will report to Ferguson Hall as normal, but all the juniors are registered and will be taking the ACT on that day. And then sophomores and seniors, luckily, get to stay at home, and they have their assignments online. Our peer listening group right now is planning the annual teacher versus student basketball game, which is called Hoops for Hope, and they're also organizing Say Something Week, which is a school-wide spirit week made to help unify the high school against bullying and to kind of guide towards the prevention of bullying. The Weekend of Jazz is at the end of this month, and it's organized by our band department. Beaver Creek students will be performing on Friday, and then Saturday, there are about 20 jazz bands from the surrounding areas and four headliners that are going to come together for a fun-filled, music-filled weekend. Our color guard recently got second place at their competition at Belbrook High School last weekend, and they're competing again for finals this weekend. And then also, our show choir received third place at Loveland Show Fest last weekend, and they're also competing again this weekend at Olin Tangi. And then lastly, tryouts for our Spring Musical School of Rock are happening now.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, appreciate all that information, it's good to know that. And that concludes presentations for the team.
Thank you all for coming, we really appreciate it. Okay, we do have two speakers tonight. So before I call you up, I just wanted, so it's Jared Cutler and Diana Unger. I just need to tell you that you'll have three minutes in which to speak. You need to give us your name and address. There will be no comments from the board, but should your comments require a response, someone will get back to you. So we're going to start with Jared Cutler.
Jared Cutler, 3188 Ibis Court, Beaver Creek, 45431. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it. I want to take just a moment to say word of support for trans students in Beaver Creek and the rest of Ohio. As you know, in January, the Ohio Legislature overrode the Governor's VO of House Bill 68, which means that minors will be unable to receive gender-affirming care in the state of Ohio. Trans girls will be prohibited from participating in girls' and women's sports in Ohio. This is just one of many pieces of legislation targeting the trans community. I'm appalled by the cruelty and hatred on the part of the sponsors of legislation that targets our trans family, friends, and neighbors. I'm particularly concerned about the impact this toxic and demeaning legislation has on our trans on our trans students. Our friends and family, the trans community, have been bullied, harassed, and picked on their whole lives. They shouldn't have to endure bullying, harassment, and being picked on by their elected representatives. The community group I participate in, Citizens for a Better Beaver Creek, strongly and unequivocally condemns all legislative attacks on the trans community, calls on policymakers to abandon or reverse all policies that don't treat all of Ohio citizens with dignity, respect, empathy, and compassion. To the trans members in our community, I just want to say that with all the tax and violence currently being directed your way, many of us are on your side. We're disgusted by what we see being done to you and you have our love, acceptance, and support. To those who reside in Beaver Creek City School District, I ask that you always act with respect, dignity, and compassion in your conversation behavior with the LGBTQ+ community. Please oppose any and all mean-spirited hateful legislative attacks on the trans community. House Bill 68 is merely one of many legislative attempts to deny the humanity and dignity of our trans friends and family. I would ask that each of you would act with respect, compassion, empathy, and support for a population of Ohioans who have known far too much persecution in their lives as it is. We trust the school district to endeavor to protect all students regardless of gender identity and to provide equal access to educational extracurricular opportunities. We all have choices to make in terms of how we treat other people. Choose love, choose respect, choose compassion, and choose to stand against the legislative hate being directed at some of the most oppressed and vulnerable among us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Diana Unger.
Good evening. I'm Diana Unger and I live at 3461 Napanee Drive. Thank you Board of Education members for allowing me to be here tonight to speak about our levy committee, our school levy committee. I am the chair of the Citizens for Beaver Creek Schools Committee and I like to give an update for those who are watching on recording or live stream as well. And I wanted to inform you all that we are working actively on reinventing our website. It's very close to being introduced. We're trying very hard to reach out to the community more through various platforms, including our new YouTube channel. We have the first of our video series on educating the public in short snippets about school funding being finalized in the next few weeks, so we'll look to have that rolled out. These short videos are going to spotlight experts in our, in the area here in Beaver Creek City Schools District so that the public can see that school funding questions that they may have may also have information that's coming from outside of the district that could be useful to them in order to make positive decisions around ballot measures where school levies are concerned. We are actively using our social media outside of levy committee, or sorry, levy campaigns so that the public is used to our presence all year round. And we're looking for more engagement there and specifically, we're looking to involve more people in the community from all walks of life so that we can have a really active committee that can reach everyone that is in Beaver Creek City Schools. We have approximately 42,000 registered voters in the district and so we're aiming to reach as many of them as we can. Our work is focusing on educating the public at the basic level on school funding and its effect on Beaver Creek City Schools, but also giving folks who are really interested in learning more, as crazy as that seems, about Ohio school funding. We want to give them the option to do a deep dive on any of the subjects that we're going to be highlighting. We're responding to the public's needs, the questions that they have been asking. And our intent is, is that we're not starting over every time we have a levy campaign, educating everyone over again on how this works. We'd really like to focus levy campaign timeframe on actually campaigning with the information that is specific to whatever that levy issue is. So our work as a committee is going to continue to center around our mission, which is to ensure that Beaver Creek City Schools has the funding that the district needs in order for the district to meet its mission. So be looking for more information from us here in the next few weeks and we're excited to have the opportunity to serve the district. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to need a motion in a second to approve the following. Board of Education meetings, January 6th, 2024 organizational meeting, January 6th, 2024 hearing on the tax budget meeting, and January 6th, 2024 regular Board of Education meeting. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Regano.
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
And we're into items for board discussion.
Yes, tonight we have a number of items to go through with the board. First one, you may recall back at our regular board meeting in January 6th, we had a presentation from Dr. Fisher in regards to two programs, really board tools that the board could utilize for board meetings. So what we were charged with is really kind of gathering that information, so I want to go through that with you now if you don't mind. So you have in your back right side pocket a large paperclip. You want to grab it by the large paperclip and then you'll understand why I didn't do the small paperclip. But if you take the small paperclip and you open that up, you will notice that this document has multiple colors on it. So the reason it has multiple colors, we had a team of individuals, I would say about 12 individuals, sat through both these presentations. These are individuals who make up the cabinet, but then also are the individuals who really work on creating the board book and the board agenda. And what we asked them to do is not only to sit through this, but to identify what they felt were the strengths of E-Scribe, which was one of the programs, and then what were areas they felt that were lacking or that were not, or that they still had questions about. Then the second presentation was on board docs and so we asked them to do the same thing. So the reason they are color-coded is because if you see a green comment, that matches the green comment all the way through. It's the same individual. So that's why we did it that way. Same with red, same with yellow. And then you might say, "Well, there's no purple on this other page." That was because they didn't give a comment on that page. So I wanted to provide that with you. That is four pages of information regarding the two programs there. In addition, you will notice that E-Scribe and Board Docs have both provided to the board a full presentation or breakdown of their, of their product, along with a pricing list for the district. I will say, interestingly enough, the pricing for both these is remarkably the same. I mean, they are spot on, almost same price and not nearly as expensive as we had thought they would be for us to look at. I'll give you just a snapshot, but of kind of what the thoughts were of the group was there are some really great features that both of these offer. I do think there is, there's going to be a steep learning curve for our staff. I think there'll be a learning curve for the board, but I do think there were some benefits that we saw instantaneously as we sat through the presentations. My recommendation to the board is to allow you to digest this and really kind of get some direction from the board moving forward at a later meeting. If the board is interested in moving forward with one of these programs, the timeline, just to give you an idea of timeline, it looks like there's about a 10-week buildup to go live with a board meeting. And our recommendation from cabinet was that we would want to, if we make a change, we would want to initiate that in the summer. To do it during the school year, it just seems like there's a lot going on, but maybe a June, July, starting at the first one in June, doing one in July, and then one in August, we kind of get our feet underneath us a little bit. And so we really would need to have a recommendation moving forward by the first week of April. Where if we make a decision by the first week of April, if the board would like to move forward with this, then I think we can, we can hit that, that we're actually doing something for a June board meeting. Any questions about that? It's a lot of information. I will, even the documents that they provided are very descriptive and, you know, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have even after you read it. So my intent would be to put this back on as an item for board discussion next month to see how the board would like to proceed at that time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
The next item, item B, is I wanted to give the board, I want to use the word heads-up, I guess. So you are all very aware that during last school year, we spent a large amount of time working on our new strategic plan for the district. And I will say, and I think Bobby will agree with this, Bobby really led that effort with Leadership Acceleration. What is different about this plan that is different than the plan that we've done before is there is a lot of action. We gave an update last week regarding all the committees and every committee is very active and there's a lot of movement happening, a lot of discussion on these topics, which is great. It's exciting. It's actually creating change, which is the purpose of the strategic plan. However, there's one group, I happen to lead that group, and it's the One Identity Group. And this is probably not new news to everybody, but there has been some conversation regarding, how do we look as a district? Meaning, what is our makeup? And what I mean by that is surprisingly, as we went through the strategic plan, one of the pieces that came out pretty loud from our students was this One Identity. And what I mean by One Identity is we have students who go to our elementaries, they're Valley Vikings, they're Fairbrook Foxes, they're, every elementary has a different, they have a different color. They have different colors, they have really a different mascot. Maine is the Beavers, but their Beaver looks different than our Beaver. And so it was interesting to hear that our students had a very strong push that they wanted to become Beavers. Like they feel like they don't really become Beavers until they're in Ferguson Hall. And so we implement that into our strategic plan and I just want to let the board know, we are moving very quickly with that topic. And this is not a change that we see anything happening relatively quick, but we feel it's very important for us to communicate out to our community really what is happening. We have communicated last year to our PTO because we knew that information was coming. And our, some of our PTOs have already started changing shirt colors to orange and black. And so one of the things that we feel is important is to at least tell our community, hey, this is an item that we're looking at. It's, and what is our why? Our why is because our students feel very strongly that this should be a change. So I want to share that with the board because I didn't want the board to be taken aback by a comment about what's happening to the Ankeny Chargers, what's happening to Valley Vikings, Fairbrook Foxes, you know, so on and so forth. A big piece of that is we want to honor that history, you know, we, because the committee is made up of really everybody who has graduated from Beaver Creek, with the exception of myself. So it's interesting to hear everybody who's on the committee talk about who they were, what they were. And adults, I think, struggle a little bit more with it because it's part of their identity. And when we talk with our high school kids, and we met earlier this week with a community group on this topic, the community group was pretty adamant, they felt strongly it should be Beaver Creek Beavers all the way through. When you walk in as a preschool student, you're a Beaver, and when you walk across the stage, you're a Beaver. And so just want to let you know, we're going to start exploring that work. I will keep you updated on that, but that is not something that usually goes, now if we were changing mascots, that would be a problem. If we change colors, we have no interest in doing any of that. We, we just want to kind of build and reemphasize who we are. So you'll hear more about that in the future. Any questions about that? Okay. Item D, oh no, I'm sorry, let's go back to item C. This is an easy one, I believe. Each year, we, the board tends to do a joint session with Beaver Creek Township and Beaver Creek City. Beaver Creek City has reached out and it is their turn to host. And I know this is super early, but I figure the earlier we get it on our calendars, the better off we are. September, currently, we are scheduled to meet on September 17th. That is a Tuesday. That is not a normal day for us, but it is a Tuesday on September 17th. The city would be hosting us in September and they had asked if we would be willing to go to them, let them host on September 16th, that is a Monday, and their meeting would start at 5:00 PM. So if you have 5:00 PM start time, God bless you. Be a 5:00 PM start time and as you know, we try not to have a whole lot of action items at those meetings, so we'll, we'll kind of load up the month before, so, or the month after. So I don't know if that works for your calendar. If it does, I see some heads shaking. If it does, okay, then we'll go ahead and make that change. Donna and I will make the change. Annika will change it on our website and we'll get a notice out that that's going to, I guess we won't need a notice if they approve it tonight.
Yeah, we'll need to vote on it.
Okay, then we'll ask the board to vote on that change tonight and are we, you know what, Joy, since I don't have it on here, do we want to just do it next month? I can land, we have plenty of time. That way you can put it on your calendar. We will add it next month for approval. All right, and the last, or I'm sorry, item D, not the last item, but the last item for me, want to talk to the board about kind of some of the issues that we're feeling here in the district, and this should not be a surprise to our board. One of the things that we recognize and we've seen this happen over the last four or five years is the growth of our preschool. And as you may recall, we had three wings here at Central Office. We now have two wings here at Central Office because we converted the third one about three or four years ago into classrooms. We also have three classrooms that sit over Parkwood right now and we are projected to have another classroom that is going to be needed for next year due to growth in our preschool program. As a result of that, we are struggling to identify where that other classroom will be at this point. And we are seeing a lot of pressure at our elementary schools currently. We've known that for some time. We've had individuals ask if we can redistrict. There's no need to redistrict because any movement from one school to the other just creates the exact same problem in the other building. So the board met probably about a year ago and we looked at timeline for our bond issue and we were projecting that we would be on the ballot this November for a bond issue, really to initiate our master facility plan moving forward. And one of the reasons I bring up the preschool is because we feel strongly, part of the, part of that master facility plan was to turn this building over to our kids, really convert this building to be a preschool center. We would not have our district administrative team here at all and then we would look for other locations. That's probably more information to come on that topic, but as we start looking at our master facility plan, we feel that it is prudent, it's needed, that we move forward or we start making those moves now. So what I would like to propose to the board, and I'll let Joy jump in here. Joy and I have been in conversation over the last couple of weeks on this topic, is really looking to come in March and April to the board with numbers to pass resolutions and move forward with the November bond issue. And I think that's advantageous to us for a number of reasons. One, it takes two board meetings for those resolutions to be passed. And once that second one is passed, then we are on the ballot and it allows the district the opportunity really to begin the communication out to our residents. And I think it's really critical that we begin that communication before we hit summer so that they understand what's, you know, what is happening, why is this need here? What, what does this bond issue look like, not only financially, but what, what are they going to get for their money? What in turn do they get? So, so really want to come to the board because we've not talked timeline and I would like to propose a timeline of really coming back in March to pass the first resolution and April to pass the second. So Mrs. Kitzmiller, anything you want to add?
No, I mean Tyler and I and Ms. Draughton, we've been in lots of meetings here within the last month with bond counsel, bond agent, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we're slowly but surely getting those numbers put together. I've made multiple phone calls to the county auditor to work on the estimates and the numbers with him, so I think we're getting there. I'm really hoping that we are going to be ready in March. I mean, it's, it's a push. And I told Ms. Draughton that when we started, when he said, "Do I want to go in, in March?" I was like, "Okay." So hopefully, it's going to be a push, but I think we're going to get there, so. it's going to be a push, but I think we're going to get there. So, definitely.
And I think what we're experiencing here with our preschool is just a microcosm of what's happening in the district. And the more you drive around, the more you're in the township, the more neighborhoods you see in the city that are popping up. Um, again, we don't build schools overnight. It's going to take three to four years for, and a, and a big school with all the amenities that, you know, with the fields and everything, that's probably, you're looking at maybe even up to four to five years for that to open. So we will feel a lot of pressure during that timeframe if we were successful in November. So, um, just feel like we probably need to get this ball rolling, if that's what we're going to do. It, it makes sense for us to respond to the needs of our families and our kids, uh, with what we're seeing. Any discussion, any, any concerns? Okay. If not, we'll shoot for March and April.
And we'll just say, there's a lot of discussion out in the community, just about exactly that topic.
Yeah.
I've been reporting to my barber shop.
Yeah. They're talking about in the barber shop, they're talking.
That's where, I'll tell you, that's where all the messages get spread everywhere.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. We will continue to look at that, and we will share more information, uh, when the time's right regarding what we think we can do with this building for preschool, because we have to move a little quicker for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Alexander. He's going to talk about the ELP, uh, program, the Expedited Local Partnership Program. And this relates directly to the bond.
Good evening, Board, and Mr. Draughton and Mrs. Kitzmiller. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the ELP program, which is also an item that is listed for approval this evening. The Expedited Local Partnership Program, or ELF, permits school districts that are over two years away from eligibility for state assistance under the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, or CFAP, to receive a district-wide assessment and master facility plan from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. Program participants may spend local resources on a separate and discreet part of their overall master facility plan, and later deduct qualifying expenditures from the school district's share under CFAP when the school district becomes eligible. Ohio Facilities Construction Commission will assess the classroom facility needs of the Beaver Creek City School District, and in conjunction with school district administration, develop a district-wide master facilities plan. The school district may then expend any local resources, including the proceeds of bonds, to complete a discreet part of the overall master facility plan that is either new construction or major renovation. Any project approved under ELP shall, where applicable, comply with the Ohio School Facilities Design Manual, Ohio Revised Code, and Commission policies. When a participating school district later becomes eligible, under the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, the Commission will reassess the classroom facility needs of the school district, counting the qualifying local expenditure amounts already spent as part of the local share. If the school district has spent more than the local share on approved expenditures, the state will reimburse the school district for the amount spent above the approved local share. So why is this important for our district? As we move through the implementation of our master facilities plan, we expect that a large portion of our project may qualify for reimbursement. Approving this resolution today is the first step to ensuring compliance so that we can receive reimbursement when the Beaver Creek City School District is eligible. We do know that our district qualifies for 16% reimbursement. Uh, what we do not know is when we will become eligible. That may be 10 years from now, that may be 15 years from now. We are unsure of that, but we do know that we are eligible for 16% reimbursement, and approval today would start that process.
So what that means, in a nutshell, is some other board, some other superintendent, some other treasurer is going to get a check from the state that's going to help offset the project that we do, and, and it'll be millions of dollars
Yes.
that the state will be giving to Beaver Creek City Schools at some point because this board moved forward to accept that program. So it's, it's a win. It's 16 cents on the dollar for those parts of the project that are eligible. So it's a smart move for the board, and it will pay not only for the future board and, uh, staff, but it will also help our community. So.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes items for board discussion.
Under financial reports, I'm going to motion in a second to approve the following. January 2024 financial reports, fiscal year 24 certificate of estimated resources and appropriations, and January 2024 donated items.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, real quickly, I would like to per- point out, and you look at this, the sheet that I gave to you, the, um, balance sheet, that we are 58% of our way through this fiscal year. Um, currently, our total operating receipts were at 49 and a half percent. So we're about nine and a half percent behind, and that is due to the fact that we haven't started our first half collections of real estate receipts. Um, we actually did on Friday receive a payment from the county auditor, so we are starting to collect. So you will see that, um, start to, you know, catch up here within the next month or two, and we'll be fine. Um, I did want to point out that we did receive our casino tax this month in the amount of $527,000. I mean, so it, you know, it's a little over half million. Um, it's a 2% increase over what we received last year. Um, so, um, I always just think that's an interesting one to look at, um, because that is not based on the wealth of the community or anything like that. All the school districts are the same, and it's, you know, per the student count, so, um, which is a great thing. Expenditures are also running under budget right now by about 3%, but as you can see, when you look at your supplies, textbooks, and teaching aid line, we've only spent 39% of that budget. But, um, as we get closer here within probably the next month or two, um, we'll be spending a lot of money on curriculum to go ahead and purchase that, get it ready for the, you know, get it into the teacher's hands so they can look at it before they start next year. So again, that's going to be a real quick catch-up there. Um, so, one other item of note is that we have finished our state audit. Um, it was a clean audit. Um, we will know, hopefully by the end of this month, there'll be a press release as to whether or not we qualified for the Auditor of State Award. Um, I just kudos to, to Jamie and to the, the rest of the team. I mean, it's a lot of work, but well worth it, and I think, um, I'll, I'll be really surprised if we, you know, don't qualify for that Auditor of State Award. So, um, but yeah, we're, we're good. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Organo?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
New business, I'm going to motion a second to approve the following. The employment salary changes, leaves of absence, and terminations. Approval of application for expedited local partnership program. Approval of the resolution authorizing the 2024, 2025 membership in the Ohio School Athletic Association. Approval of type IV resolution, and the approval of revisions to the 2024 program of studies.
So.
Second?
Any discussion?
I just want to talk about two items on here. One is item C. That is a standing, uh, resolution that we pass each year, uh, just for our, our community to understand, in order to be part of the OHSA, the board has to adopt that we're a member there, meaning we'll abide by the OHSA rules. And then item E is approval of the revisions for the 2024 program stays. Just want to thank, uh, really Dr. Fiori and her team for the amount of hours, countless hours that are spent pulling that together for our kids. I would challenge any school district that, to look at ours. Uh, we have great, great opportunities for our kids, and, uh, and our team really sits trying to look at what can we do that makes it, makes it exciting and interesting for our kids. So thank you for all your work on that.
Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Organo?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
And we're into announcements. So February 19th is President's Day. No school, all offices closed. February 27th is Community Cat Chat, Beaver Creek Board of Education. It'll be right here from 2:00 to 3:00. March 12th is the next Community Chat at Panera at the Fairfield Mall from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And March 21st is the next Beaver Creek Board of Education meeting at 6:30. And we're into board comments. Dr. Fisher?
Thank you. Um, boy, what a meeting. There's so much going on here right now. Um, I am, I am proud to see all the great stuff our schools are doing. I always love the school spotlight. Uh, excited about all the changes that are coming. Um, boy, it's a lot. Um, I do want to take some of my time this evening to, um, reflect on and raise awareness of some of the issues, uh, that Mr. Cutler raised regarding House Bill 68. Um, for those who aren't aware, House Bill 68, uh, is a bill restricting access to healthcare and also requiring the schools to, uh, ban certain children from participating in, uh, sports that agrees with their gender identity. Um, gender dysphoria is relatively uncommon. Most of us really don't ever experience it, and so for me at least, I found it really hard to understand what that might be like, and really to understand what it's like for a child who's experiencing that, or for an adult who's experiencing that. But we have such a large district with, uh, so many students that even with only one and a half percent of people being affected by this, we're talking about over 100 families in Beaver Creek that are facing, um, the state now cutting off their access to healthcare, um, that their children need, and then some tiny fraction of that who may want to participate in sports and are now feeling like they're really not welcome, which is never a position I want to put, uh, students in. So, at a high level, um, what transgender means is that just means that somebody's life experience feels different than the gender they were assigned at birth. Um, for a lot of people who've never experienced it, like I said, it's, it's not something that comes intuitively. So I would just ask you for a minute to experience, to imagine the experience of what it would be like to wake up one morning and find yourself in a body that is the opposite of the sex you've lived with your whole life. Something would be horribly wrong, and it would be jarring. And once you get on, over that shock of one day, suppose it happens the next, and the next, and you're going through this for weeks, imagine how, um, disorienting, how difficult that would feel to live with. On top of that, now imagine, you have to go to work. You can't just stay home. You've got to feed your family. What are you going to do? What clothes are you going to put on in the morning? What bathroom are you going to use? That's a problem, by the way, that has no good answer. Um, no matter what you choose, you put yourself at risk of being, uh, called awful names or even potentially physically assaulted. Um, for me personally, I can imagine this experience would result in an intense feeling of discomfort, uh, both in my own body and in the constant fear of rejection from my society, my community, the people around me, everyone I see. Um, it would feel pretty scary. So now on top of all that, imagine you're a child going through puberty. So that was a hard enough time as is, uh, as a cis, which means my gender identity and my sex align with the standard. That means that, you know, for me, that was an awkward time. I think for a lot of us, that was an awkward time. We know that middle school is tough on kids, but for a kid going through these kind of problems as well, these kinds of mental challenges, uh, and, and it is, it is very, very difficult. And in light of that, it is no surprise that the statistics show that 82% of transgender people have considered suicide, and 40%, 40% have attempted. And so that's why this access to mental and, uh, psychological healthcare are so essential for the over 100 Beaver Creek families that are probably affected by this. So, having established kind of who it is that we're talking about here with this law, um, I thought it would be important to describe a couple of things this law does, and talk about things I think we should be doing as a district to try to support these families as they go through this transition, through this change in law. Um, House Bill 68 strips families of these medical freedoms and the parental right to control the medical decisions that their, uh, children need. Um, in public relations messaging about the bill, and in a lot of the media coverage you'll see, they talk about how they banned experimental surgery on minors. But in fact, there were no hospitals in the state of Ohio that were providing gender-affirming surgery to minors. It's not a thing. What they don't mention as often is that they're also banning access to hormone therapy in the state, but only for the treatment of gender dysphoria. That's because hormone therapy is actually used pretty common, has been for decades, for children with something called precocious puberty. I've been doing some reading on this. What that means is sometimes kids start puberty in like second grade, right? And they're not ready for it, their peers aren't ready for it. It is common medical practice to delay the onset of puberty for those children. And for a child who's going through the trauma of dealing with gender dysphoria, being able to delay those effects of puberty is really a huge, huge thing that you want to have available for that child. It is reversible, it is not permanent, and it has been, uh, safely used for a very long time. So, um, all this is important to us as a district because what it means is that these families, um, who are facing this are now, these families and these parents who are already struggling with raising a child who is a target of a lot of online harassment, frequently demonized in the media as, um, just all kinds of awful names. These children are going through this, and their parents are struggling with getting them the right healthcare they need, and they've just had that option taken away. So now they have to consider, am I going to travel out of state to get the healthcare that might help my child stay alive, help my child survive puberty without, uh, considering suicide? Um, so that brings me to the first thing I think we need to do as a district, and I think, uh, we will do, um, and that is be understanding that some students will need to miss more days of schools. Uh, and right, out of this population of 100, this is not going to be, uh, as trivial as I probably thought it was when I first started doing the research. I really didn't understand, uh, the prevalence. Um, but fortunately, the, I think the pandemic has taught us all how to do much better with remote work, right? I mean, a lot of our students, my kids, when they're out sick for a day, they've got their work to do at home. It's great. I mean, I think that works pretty well. The second thing this bill does, um, that I find particularly nasty to our, our transgender students is it requires that we, as the school district, tell transgender girls, but only transgender girls, that they're not welcome to participate in their gender sport. And I find that particularly egregious because it makes us the villain. I never wanted to be in the position where as a school, we have to tell children, you're not welcome here. That is the opposite of what I stand for. Um, so in my view, and I think we've heard this a lot, athletics is a great way for students to learn discipline and teamwork. It builds community. It is very important to me that we provide the same opportunities to all of the students. And that brings me to the second thing that we need to do, but frankly, I don't know how. Um, I would like us to see, have a plan to accommodate all children in the district who want to participate in our athletics programs. We collect taxes from everyone. We have a duty to provide the same quality of service to every single student, and this law doesn't excuse us from that duty. So, um, I have some additional notes on, on kind of the sources that I found, but I've been looking at things like Mayo Clinic and the original legislation. Um, but I, I just hope that moving forward, we can really work to do our best to, uh, help these children who are targeted by this law feel like they're still a welcome part of one community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Morrison, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Um, it's Kitzmiller. I loved the excellent and detailed financial information that you gave us this evening. Congratulations to you and your team on, on the clean audit. So that's phenomenal. So thank you. Uh, I loved having the two groups here as well this evening. The, the group, uh, from Ankeny as well as the high school, uh, gave us a lot of very good information. Uh, in particular, the high school group, uh, went into, uh, you know, we've got so many kids doing so many wonderful things. They really highlighted it, and did a great job talking about, you know, speech and drama, talking about music with all the programs going on, et cetera. They talked about athletics, uh, with all of our teams right now, either in first or second place, doing a phenomenal job. And maybe I missed it. Uh, maybe I missed it. You know, when you get old, you, 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 you don't hear everything. Uh, but I didn't hear them say that our academic team is also undefeated. Uh, so I think that's something I wanted to share as well. And then I want to thank, uh, Mr. Alexander for your work on the ELPP. Uh, definitely shows forward-thinking, very necessary. That's all.
Mrs. Hunt?
Oh, whatever. Um, I just wanted to thank our cabinet. Um, just, I was kind of just thinking over some of the things that have happened in the last few, uh, weeks and months, and just the multitude of community partnerships that you guys have cultivated. Uh, I know, Paul, you and Joy attend Rotary, um, and some of our other cabinet members attend that as well. Um, hosting the Faith Leaders Luncheon for, uh, people of all different faith to come and partner with our district. Um, I had a conversation with Bobby today during my day job, um, about just supporting some special needs students that we have in our, uh, church community that, just trying to find ways to help support families. And, um, I just think it speaks to the And I just think it speaks to the character of the people on our board, on our cabinet, that Bobby's willing to come on her own time to provide training for our volunteers. So those kind of things, I just, I'm sure there's great people in all districts, but I just have a hard time believing they're better than ours. So I'm just really grateful for all the things you guys do to be out in the community and be partnering with the community and doing those things because I think that matters. I think our families see that. And I think that speaks volumes. And when we ask them for, you know, financial support or whatever it is, I think our families know that, you know, it's a partnership and they're not, it's not always us asking, you know? I think we're really, the cabinet has really made an effort to get out in our community and community chats and all of those things, just keeping an open door conversation, which I know Joanne and I have talked a lot about, you know, since we got on the board, about just loving the fact that the cabinet is so visible in the community. And I think people feel that there's an approachable aspect to you all that maybe that didn't always exist. So I just want to thank each of you for that and what you've done to create that culture. And we just want you to know we appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Okay. Just to add to that, I think the system has really been great at providing a culture of engagement to the community. Kids coming in from Ankeny and the high school. Sometimes we forget in schools that, who our customers are, really, and that is the kids that we service every day. There's a lot of other influences out there trying to work against or maybe sometimes for that, but it's still, they are ultimately our customers. So Joanne and I were at the, and Carl as well, at the show choir performance in Loveland. It was great. They took third place. Don't know, haven't a clue how they were beaten. I mean, they were just awesome, completely awesome. So Carl and I have a bigger stake in it with our kids, my granddaughter, his daughter as well, being one of the soloist performers in the show choir. But it was great. They make us look really, really good. Want to thank Paul and the staff for providing the Faith Leaders Group that we had. Thought it was very informative. And again, that's community engagement, that the message gets out there. In many ways, we have a common purpose, a little bit different directions, but still it's all about families and connections to families as well. Okay, let's see. At the Career Center, we have three new board members from Zinnia, Cedar Cliff, and Fairborn. And so it's kind of, there's seven members on the board there, and so three new members make a big difference. So it's nice to have that. And here the sad thing is about all of that is that makes me the senior member there. So that scares me a little bit. But things are going great, just like, just like they are here. We're mid-year. And at the Career Center, of course, we are all about sending kids into the workforce and providing pathways for them to do that. It all is going well. You mentioned how fabulous our treasurer is, well, we have a new treasurer there who is equally as fabulous.
Wonder who she is?
I wonder. But yeah, so it's all good. I think that, I was going to say something about House Bill 68 as well, but thank you for your presentation on that. Because it is, politics a lot of times get in the pathway, the things that we do. You know, we educate all kids, everybody that walks through the door. So we have to, we have to service them at that level. Discrimination is definitely not a good thing. That's it.
Okay. So I was at the dentist this morning and thinking, we really don't care. Okay, just saying. But the point is, so he always comes in, he'll say, so Howard Beaver Creek School is Julian, and he doesn't live in Beaver Creek. And you know, man, we're great. And he said to me, you know, there's something about that district. And I said, oh, that's true. And he said, I have to thank your school district, he said, because during COVID, you were one of the few districts that felt it was important to keep your kids in school. Now remember, he doesn't even have kids in Beaver Creek. And I said to him, he said, so I want to thank the board. I said, no, you need to thank our superintendent and our teachers and the administration. Those are the people who kept the district open, not the board. I mean, yep, okay, we okayed it, but it was the superintendent that brought the recommendations to us. It was the teachers who had the guts to be in the classroom every day. So, you know, I tell this all the time, so I just want you to know, you are so appreciated by people who don't even have kids in our community. So I just, so that had nothing to do with the dentist, but just saying. I thought that was really nice of him to say that, and he didn't have to say anything. So thank you all. People are amazing, you know. I love you. That's the truth. Bobby, thank you for our curriculum. You know, I tell you this all the time, our kids are very fortunate to have you and your staff give them the curriculum they have. I wish I had that curriculum. When I was going to school, I mean, these kids are very fortunate. So thank you for that. You know, our band, our concerts are great. And if you haven't gotten your tickets for the Weekend of Jazz, there are still tickets available because I went onsite to look at it. And all you have to do is go to weekendofjazz.org, and you can purchase your tickets. Charlie and I have ours, so we're ready to go. And if you haven't been to Weekend of Jazz, Saturday night is the most exciting. So you just, you want to be there for that. And with that, I need a motion a second to take as an executive session for the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of Public Employees, Code 121.22G1, and the Purchase or Sale of Real Estate, Code 121.22G2.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yep.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for coming, everybody.